I don't think I would have done that. There's some things I could do, but if he's not in the water, I would have.
This is why they make you funny.
They told me that it was not so, he said this is clean water.
Call the Hazel Park Board of Education Special Board Workshop to order on this October 6, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Roll call.
Beaton?
Here.
Fortress? Fox? Retique?
Here.
Beaton? Here. Lafranboise? Here. Becker?
Here.
Next order of business is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
I motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Moved by Monica, support by Debbie to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Retique? Yes. Lafranboise?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes. Motion carries, I forgot that part last time. Five to zero. I have public comments. A little different meeting tonight. The Board of Education is a business meeting for the public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not considered to be a community public meeting. The board has two, provided two opportunities during the meeting for the public to address the board. I have two requests here. I have Kalen McGinnis. State your name and address, please.
Kalen McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. I'm sure you all missed me. First, I'd like to say that you lack the requisite capacity for comprehension. Take that in for a moment and really think about what that means. I'd like to bring attention to the things that are currently taking place. The new wrestling coach that was announced in the summer has resigned from the high school position. Note the job posting online. You fought tooth and nail to keep him in that position. How does it feel to have wasted hours on this issue only to have the same result? The only reason he stepped down from the position was because he didn't want Coach McGinnis coaching the junior high. The whole issue my husband brought up at every meeting was that he was forced out of his position. And this just goes to show that he indeed was. Why would the new coach jump from varsity back down to junior high? I'd like to hear the reasoning. The superintendent doesn't want Mr. McGinnis to coach because she doesn't like us to come up here to the board meetings and tell her what we see going wrong in her schools. And now I hear you're scrambling for a new coach one month before the season starts because you don't want quote unquote Donald McGinnis or Mr. Harrison coaching for Hazel Park schools. Why do you not want Gary to coach now since you've been on his phone offering him the position nonstop up until just recently when he told you he wanted the junior high position? I also hear that there were only three events scheduled for the wrestling team. Who's not doing their jobs to ensure the kids are getting matches every week? You're supposed to be calling to get into those tournaments. Now, to secure your team a spot. When you have people that aren't qualified for the positions they're in, they can't do their job to the fullest extent because they don't know the knowledge behind it. A real wrestling coach would know that you have to get your schedule done now. You're all failing these kids. You need to fix it. The superintendent is trying to dictate who gets into that position, which is not her job. The superintendent needs to be more worried about Hazel Park Schools being third from the bottom for reading comprehension in Oakland County than who is in the position to coach the wrestling team. The superintendent needs to learn how to stay out of the drama and act professionally as her job would entail. Interference compels consequence. The board needs to learn how to hold their one employee responsible for her actions. Her constitution is devoid of authenticity. You all fail to apprehend that I stand resolute on substance and principle. Thank you for your time.
Next is Don McGinnis.
Don McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. Yes, I'm here again. And I'm not just here again about all the same stuff that we pretty much said, I told you so. It's the fact that you guys are letting these kids down. You guys let these kids down. And how you are dictating who is the coach, how you have, I put multiple applications in. Multiple. Gary Harrison put applications in. How can this guy quit a job and move to another one whenever he wants a month before the season? How is that allowed? You know, I come up here. You know, I come up here so often and tell you guys the same thing over and over. Hold your people accountable. You have someone that's dictating whose job, who was emailing, messaging, all that, talking about how he was going to be the coach on the side, not from HR, not from AD, from the superintendent. Dictating who goes in there so I do not get in there. Now they are reaching out to multiple other coaches. I've been in the wrestling world for a long time. They message me constantly and say, look who just messaged me. I have all that proof. Pat Wright has told employees that he was going to make them the head coaching job, that he was going to get them the highest pay. He is not an athletic director. And as my knowledge that I heard many, many times that the superintendent said that she does not do the hiring. So why is she emailing, texting, calling individuals to have this position? Corruption at its finest. And it needs to stop. You guys have learned nothing from all these meetings that you guys do not follow your policies, your procedures, your hiring processes. If he stepped down, the only other applicant should have been me. I did not get a call. The post was back out. I applied. Why, why did he step down? Was it because I emailed the athletic director a week before, said I want, I'll take the junior high job instead? Is it just a vendetta towards me, just like how the banner was took down with McGinnis' face on it? Is it maybe that you said that this is just a learning year and we're going to let the kids lose is what I heard, is what the superintendent said too? If you guys are reaching out to other coaches, asking them to apply, where was my reach out a couple of months ago? Sounds kind of ironic. I think you guys, yeah, it's a wrestling team, you're right. A wrestling team that had 75 kids on our youth, 100 kids signed up for the high school, 20 something kids in the junior high, that means you had almost 200 kids in your district wrestling. You guys should matter. That's 10%. 10% of your students wrestle. You guys had families move out of the district for this. You guys lost money for this, to fight for this guy that literally just shit on the kids. I got a letter here I want to hand to the president because you guys don't answer no questions on emails. So I'm going to give it to. Remember, you're supposed to put the best person in that spot. You don't have to like them as long as they did their job. What did I do wrong? Because I came up here and spoke? Freedom of speech at a public forum? Am I getting picked out for that? Because I brought up all the truths that I believe or the problems that I believe that need to be fixed in your school? As a Hazel Park alumni, my kid was a fourth generation kid that came to Hazel Park? You guys need to fix this. And by take care of your one employee.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our new business, we have a special guest. Ms. Terry Lass from Oakland Schools. Terry came and helped us in our finances and she prepared some recommendations and made an evaluation summary. And so some board members, we wanted an opportunity to ask some questions about your information that you provided us. So thank you for being here. So does somebody want to start? Somebody have a question?
I always have questions. Did you have anything to add to this or are we just discussing this?
We're discussing your questions at the last meeting that you said you had from the reports that we had given to you. So. Terry, can you, can we hear you? No, we can't, Brad. Hold tight, we can't hear you. Can't hear you. Hold on, he's working on it. Yeah, we had it working earlier, they did. What? Are you muted, Terry? It says mute on your screen.
No, that's just where you move the mouse and it.
No? Or can you just let it go through that computer? Well, then it won't go on YouTube, right? Yeah, I got a letter in.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, are we ready? I was curious, my first question is, you have two types of budgeting. Are you suggesting one or the other or a combination of both or?
Hold on, you're muted again. Okay, go ahead. No?
I said, want me to share it?
Share it or am I going to email it?
I can look at Debbie's. I might have left it in the car because I printed it just on the way over.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, wait.
Yes, yes.
No, I've got Debbie's, I'm good. Thank you. I'm sure Mike said.
Yeah, I can. Perhaps if you repeat the question?
Sure.
That would help me.
Okay, so in your, in the paperwork that you sent us, there was two budgeting things. One is position-based budgeting and one is zero-based budgeting. Are we so, I'm not understanding why you sent two. Is there one that you recommend more than the other or is it a combination? Is it?
They're very different. They're very different and the advantages and complications or challenges with them really depend on your scenario. Position budgeting, I say that there are two, it's not either or. So position budgeting is when you take every role in your district, every single position that you have, and you apply the wages and benefits and the costs and such. And that provides you with a framework for budgeting all of your wage and metric accounts, which of course for a school district is about 85% of your total expenditures. So that's position budgeting. That can be done with or without zero-based budgeting. Zero-based budgeting is when you scrap everything and start from scratch, which means that it's the year that you do it or each year that you do it, you have to go through a very lengthy process of justifying every expense, every position, every expense, every conference that one goes to, every tax book that you purchase, every single dollar has to be challenged and re-budgeted. So you're questioning everything. So that's, that's the two. Position budgeting is a tool to.
Can I open the other?
Based on what you saw in our district?
Yes. Zero-based budgeting, most districts roll over their budget from one year to the next. They clean it up and make sure that. For Hazel Park to land eventually when you have had an opportunity to clean up your budget.
How do you account for the other 15% of our expenditures when you use position-based budgeting?
So you mentioned that salaries in general are 80 to 85%. So that leaves 15% for 20% that isn't accounted for in position-based budgeting. So how do you account for that? How would you budget that?
For those. What you typically spend and of course, not that those items are questioned, but things like utilities and other items where there's very little control, that's a great way to budget for those items is to take a look at history.
Thank you. Okay, so my second question is, what is going to be your role in the implementation of the recommendation? Are you going to come help us? Is somebody else going to come help us? Are you going to just take?
I just wanted to understand the scope.
I do not have the capacity to come out on a regular basis to assist, but I, like all other districts in accounting, I am a good resource, someone for both Monica and Crystal to call upon and if they have questions or challenges, I can make it out there on an occasional basis. It's certainly not something that I could do on a weekly basis or anything like that. But that's really what Oakland School's role would be. It's for me to back them up or assist them if they need it when they call upon it.
Okay, so your role is support if they call you?
Correct, correct. I am not coming out to check to see that they're doing the things that I recommended. I'm not, not monitoring, I'm not doing anything like that. I'm assisting when they, when they need it and request it.
No, because that makes this one new.
I have one, I'm just wondering, Terry, this is quite a list here. How long do you think to accomplish these recommendations?
It's going to take some time because you have a relatively new business office. Moscow hasn't been there for all that long and even Crystal hasn't been there for very long either. So it's going to take even a seasoned business professional time to get familiar with an individual. Since you're familiar with their systems, their programs, there's a lot to get acclimated with before you can really be accurate and up to date. So it's going to take some time. I do think that they should prioritize because I've had conversations with Monica to assist with what I think should be the things to focus on first. For instance, some of the audit findings. And I know they've already worked on those and they've made a lot of progress towards making sure that the audit findings are cleared up. So we've had conversations about what should be prioritized. I think to get all of these things done will take a solid year.
I know Monica did a spreadsheet, which was pretty cool because it says what's recommended and like who's.
Who's doing it or how long. So I think it's something new that she started, it's very informational, I guess is what you say, very organized. So.
Okay, got there.
So, anybody else? I don't have any, I already met with Terry a few weeks ago. I don't have anything else.
I have one, Terry. I would just want or ask if you could elaborate on why you believe an accounting secretary is needed. I, I see your reasoning, but I actually do believe them. I just kind of want others to recognize that you put in here how our administrative assistant was not replaced. Our staff's working long and probably more than they need to be. So can you just elaborate why you believe that this is necessary?
Confidence of the numbers. And that only happens if they have the time to ensure accuracy, that they have the time to appropriately communicate, that they have the time to watch over controls. Things like making sure that bank reconciliations are done on a timely basis and making sure that budgets are being appropriately monitored on a timely basis. If they do not, if they have to spend their time doing things like journal entries, these aren't manual tasks, they're important, but they're time consuming. And they can be done with someone who has accounting, an accounting background to free them up to do these higher level items. And until you have that case, there are so many deadlines within a school business office. We're constantly running up against the next report that's due, the next item that's due, that they will always be functioning in a, meet the next deadline sort of frazzled nature and won't be able to provide the higher level budget review that I think is really needed there in Hazel Park.
So Terry, about. That isn't a position that's common in other districts that I see, is it? Because we have such a list of things to correct.
Hi, Beth. No, I disagree. I think that this is a common position in other districts. There's different names for it, so it's called various different things. But it's common and I looked across Oakland County from districts that are very close and similar in size, Hazel Park is well, is much larger. And most do have a position like an accounting secretary. Someone who can handle transfers and journal entries and bank reconciliation, that sort of thing. So I don't think that you're unique in that things are not clean or need to be cleaned up. I think this would be an official position, both in the short term, but also to maintain. I don't think that it's one that, once you get things cleaned up, that you no longer need it. I think it's a valuable position in any business office.
Do you think somebody else might have been doing? If I've been on the board, this is my love of the year, we haven't had this person. Maybe that's why we're in this situation. Could somebody else have been doing some of that, like accounts payable or receivable or?
Yeah, I'm doing it. Sometimes those, sometimes those roles are combined. So for instance, I know of districts who have their accounts receivable person is also the person who does their transfers and journal entries and that sort of thing. Like you do not currently have enough folks within your business office to handle all the tasks that there are. And, and part of that honestly is the expansion of so many things. So for instance, the Office of Retirement Services, taking care of retirement, the reporting that's necessary for. the reporting that's necessary for the Michigan, uh, public school employee retirement system, that has become so complex and enormous now compared to ten years ago. And, and that's not the only thing. There are so many more reports that are, that are required of business officials than what used to be required. So I, I think all districts would tell you, even if they've had seasoned professionals who stay there and are, and they don't have a lot of turnover, they're struggling to meet the demands. So when you have constant, have, have not had, uh, if you had level roles, even with level roles, people are struggling. And so I, I wouldn't point to that as the reason necessarily, but it certainly has contributed because your business officials are spread too thin and they're trying to accomplish too many things and the easiest thing to do is the next deadline, even if that's not what's going to necessarily ensure accuracy or build trust within the community.
Makes sense.
Last, can I interject on that? Because I think you hit a, a important point, Terry, with, we're really always chasing deadlines. And I think that, um, this position would allow us to be proactive instead of reactive. I think we're always reacting to the current, uh, deadline or emergency. So I don't know if you think that's a fair way of saying that.
I do, yes, I do, I, I think that's, that's exactly it. Nobody intended for things to get behind. Nobody intended for the numbers to not be as, as accurate as possible. You just run out of time when you're trying to accomplish, because the deadlines are not just perceived deadlines. There, if you miss a deadline and they hold, they withhold five percent, maybe it's, maybe there's consequences. You could end up with losing federal funding. Maybe there are various consequences, all financial in nature, that make us really concentrate on those deadlines. So it's not a misallocation of priorities. It, it, it simply don't, that's what you feel is the need to get done because there are consequences.
Anybody else? Nope, I don't have any, no.
All right, Terry, I think that's it, this was very informational, appreciate your time, uh, that's for sure.
Of course, I'm sorry that this didn't work out.
It's okay, we got to see you first of what you look like, so we put a face to the name.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night.
Everybody have a good evening.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Bye, Terry.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next we have public comments, anybody wishing to speak a public comment? Well, you just come up, Donald.
I'll put it on here.
Don McGinnis, thirteen thirty-seven East Granite. So I, I want you guys to think all the months that you guys just went through during this. And I want you to think what he just did a month before. And I want you to, to think your guys' policies and procedures are how to put people in those roles. Okay? I want you guys to really think about, was this done right? Are we doing it right? Is that the best person for the job? How can he just jump his positions? He resigned from one to go to another. Is that even allowed? Did you guys approve that? All these questions that nothing got done. Nothing's getting done. I have multiple emails, text messages, still asking about getting the trophy with the plate, getting the names on the plate, getting people on the wall, getting people on the board, all the awards that they're supposed to get that you guys still haven't got done, that the coaches have to push for a year to get done. A coach ain't a seasonal job. I haven't went nowhere. I told you, I will be here to hold you guys accountable for things like this that I knew was gonna happen. This is what happens when you don't do your checks on your resume. They didn't call his previous work and say, did you quit the junior Vikings or the wrestling club at the time? No, no one asked that, because he did. No one asked about two years ago when he made a big fit that he didn't get an interview. And they went everywhere. And they found out he turned it down. Now he resigned to mess up another year. Why? Why? It's because of me. He doesn't like me, I get it, you, some of you guys may not like me, that's fine. The question is, am I right for the job? Did I do something wrong? Do I get criticized for coming up here and bringing problems to the board? Is it discriminating or harassment from certain employees because I turned certain people in? What is it? Tell me what I did wrong. Again and again, we need to have a meeting with me. I'm done asking.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have board member and administration comments.
Powder puff starts in fifty-five minutes.
Yeah.
And bonfire, I'm pretty excited.
I just want to thank Terry for speaking with us, that's, uh, really good info. And, uh, I'm glad we're working on the policy procedure with our new policy firm, uh, so we can move forward and make sure our policies and procedures are, are good and they don't contradict each other, so I'm happy to be a part of that committee. And, uh, yeah, powder puff and bonfire.
Good times.
I do want to say that there are a few parents, um, because students did not know it was going to cost them money to get into their fun event. Um, there's some parents willing to pay for students, so if you do not have money and you still want to come, please come. We have plenty of people who are willing to help you out. And I do just have one question in the group. We received an email earlier today and our board president was sending stuff to M A S B about the strategic planning, but you used your personal email instead of our school email. Is there a reason for that? I just assumed that you would use our board, or like our board emails to your personal, you had your personal.
I sent it by board email to all of you. I didn't use my personal email.
Your request to her has your personal email on it for your school board business, so I was just curious if there was a reason.
I have no idea. I put it under board books. You'll have to show me. Anybody else? I just want to say, you know, throughout the year, there's a special recognition of people. And this month, it's thank the principal, it's principal's month, so please reach out and send them a note or just give them a pat on the back and, and say, good job. It's, they're dealing with a lot of, a lot of kids, a lot of families. They love their jobs and, you know, thank them for that. Last month was our technology team, which I forgot, I had it written down and did mention it. So thank our, our tech people, if you know them, and they're in and out of our buildings. Mr. Wilkins is here tonight, uh, hooking us up on the YouTube. And then tomorrow is Build Up the Park at the junior high from five-thirty to seven. And I couldn't find the topic, it's for parents and community and students.
Dr. Papazin will be speaking about the MTSS Special Ed and 504 process.
Perfect, thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion.
Monica.
In a second.